Good morning, everyone. Jake, if we could, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order, please. Roll call.
Keisha Johnner.
Here.
Mark Ramey.
Here.
Steve McCombs.
Here.
I'll entertain a motion for today's agenda.
Make a motion, we approve today's agenda.
Second.
Ramey.
Hi.
Johnner.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Item number three is communications. Jake, do you have any communications?
Nope.
None here.
None.
I don't have any either. Item number four is, this is the portion of our agenda during which we can hear any public comment that is currently not on the agenda. These could possibly become future topics for future agendas. Is there any public comments? Do we have anything online? All right, moving on. Entertain a motion for today's consent agenda.
Make a motion, we approve today's consent agenda.
Second.
Ramey.
Hi.
Johnner.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Onto business. Item number one is discussion, possible action for the Iowa Department of Agriculture land stewards, which is Idols, the Division of Mines and Minerals. It's the Wilcox Park Reclamation. We have presenter? Okay, go ahead. You could please, yep. You could state who you are and.
Yeah, I'm Ryan Starkey. I'm a project coordinator with the Mines and Minerals Bureau, part of the Iowa Department of Ag and Land Stewardship.
Thank you, Ryan. Pulling up the. Okay.
So, I just have a short slideshow here, kind of going over the Wilcox AML project, kind of go over the purpose of our program, kind of goals and how our funding all works. Purpose of our program is to eliminate safety features, physical, human health and safety hazards that are caused by mining pre-1977. Basically, we look to eliminate those safety hazards by doing mass grading projects and then creating a more natural landscape or improved conservation landscape on the, on the site, making the land useful for either recreation or farming or grazing. But here's the Wilcox site. You see some lines on here. You have the red line on the southern portion of the picture. That is actually the NOAA project, but the green outline is all part of the Wilcox AML reclamation area. The side to the west of the road has already been reclaimed. I believe that was done in the early 90s. And so we'd be looking at the portion that the Marion County Sheriff's Office has their shooting range area in that, and then to the north up to where the timber stops, and then also to the left of the red square on the bottom. This is approximately about 100 acres and has dangerous piles and embankments, dangerous high wall. It also has some very poor water quality. There's acid mine drainage going throughout the site. You'll see some very orange acidic water, which is caused from iron precipitating out of that water, reacting with oxygen. This is a priority feature map. This is just showing the hazards that are throughout this area. Again, with the dangerous piles and embankments and dangerous high walls. Little history on the area, in the 1930s, there was actually no mining off a T-17 in this area right here. Same within the 50s. You can start seeing some on the western portion and then towards the south, but in the 60s, it really starts to expand. Mining see sometime in between the 60s and early 70s, as you can see, you're starting to get a lot of tree growth growing through there. But. Reclamation plan, what we'd be looking at doing if we were to go forward with this project. Basically doing a traditional design, which is like what's out on the Wilcox, south to the west side of the road. This would include terraces, tiles, intakes. We'd also be looking at putting wetlands onsite to treat some of that acidic water that's coming from onsite drainage and offsite drainage, and also creating waterfowl habitat with those wetlands. Using upland seed mix basically to promote diversity with different upland game birds or any other type of upland wildlife. And then using, making it a usable piece of the property right now. I was talking to Steve a couple of weeks ago. A lot of people don't use this public portion of the land just because of how thick the timber is and how thick the understory is. So it's kind of a wasted landscape, whereas on the western side of the road, it is a lot more usable and a lot more diverse wildlife in it. So I'll get into Paul Todd here in a second, but the funding for this, owned by Marion County, the Iowa Department of Ag gets a grant from the US government, from the Office of Surface Mining. And we get an AML grant, which is a $3 million a year grant that we get annually, and then also with the Biden infrastructure bill that had passed that increased our grant funding up to 9 million. So basically, we tripled our workload and we're looking for larger scale projects to be able to complete and spend some money on. So there's no actual cost to the county for us to do this project. If we go forward with it, there are some concerns that we have to work through, mainly neighboring landowners. This project is split kind of throughout different landowners off the south and the east side of the site. But those would all get figured out during the design process. Timing wise, we'd be looking if we were to go forward with this project, potentially getting into an engineering contract before the end of the year. Give the engineer a year to do the design work and then going into construction the following year, if we were to go as planned. The Paul Todd site is another Marion County owned site. This is south off of Highway 5 and Johnny Cake Road. So this is just another one that we are also looking at going further into. As you can see, you have some dangerous high walls, pit ponds and dangerous piles and embankments on that one as well. But it would fall under the similar structure as the Wilcox site, if that would be looked into for doing reclamation.
Is there, how many acres is this on the Paul Todd?
The Paul Todd one, I think it's about 38, if I can recall off the top of my head.
So how are, if you're talking about neighboring landowners?
Yeah.
Not too familiar with how these work, if a landowner is, happens to be farming or using it for some kind of productive purpose. They compensated if the land needs to be used for the project?
No, so typically right now, all the land is pretty much useless.
Okay, so there's nothing on and nothing going on?
No, they might have a timber reserve program or something like that. We don't compensate on that and typically we have them get out of that program. So they might have some taxes that they have to pay back on that tax breaks, but there's not too many landowners that have it in a forest reserve program. The only other one we really run into is CRP, now would be more access getting onto the site. And so we work with FSA to account for that and then we will go in and reseed that area and then there's really typically no loss on the landowner.
Okay, so the benefit to the landowner is it becomes potentially more productive?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So on, on public lands, it's a little bit different because you're probably not looking at grazing or haying. It's going more into a recreational value. But makes it just more usable.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
And just so that I can get clarity, when it becomes, you know, whether Wilcox or Paul Todd, and if this is something that was done, then ultimately those sites, can they be used for like hunting or do we have a, I mean, there's parameters in which that land can be used, correct?
So technically, there's no maintenance agreement or anything that gets signed between the county and the division. So if you guys wanted to go in and row crop it, you're more than welcome to do that. We don't recommend doing that just because the soil is very fragile. It'll have a very low yield if you have any at all, be a complete waste of money in my opinion. But we do, we would definitely give recommendations. If you looked at grazing it, we'd give grazing recommendations or hain recommendations. We're doing the Pella Wildlife Management Area with the DNR, just south of Pella. That's in design right now and they're looking at using that as a hunting area, which is what is currently used, but more of the prairie and looking at upland habitat, also turkey and deer.
For the, for the Wilcox location, maybe go back to that map. We've got the shooting range there.
Yes.
And.
Steve, I don't know what.
What impacts there?
Well, my question, I'm assuming the sheriff's office will be heavily involved in that area of reclamation.
Yes.
Because we have our long range, the 50 yard, we use that one south embankment for, you know.
Yep.
For a backstop. I know in, in the past, we had thought about doing something behind the backstop at the 25 yard range, just like an enclosed, you know, training area back in behind there. Is that correct, Isaac? Yeah, I know we talked about it, but my next question is, the entrance to the gun range, will, will we be able to incorporate a separate entrance for the landowners behind that area so they don't have to come through the gate? And I mean, there's a lot of things to be considered there.
Yeah, and we would definitely work through all those and definitely, we've already discussed working with sheriff's office about leaving some sort of, leaving that backstop or improving it in some way. Also too, if they're looking at doing an area, like you're saying, like an enclosed shooting area for drills and whatnot, we can definitely look at incorporating that as well.
I know we had kicked the idea around when we built the place, but.
But we also do look at neighboring landowners, if they do need access through the site, if they have an easement, and we can address that as well.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be something that would get eliminated out through.
Yeah, I know we're gonna have to really think that through because if it becomes a public area that people can access easily and then, you know, we're gonna have to be very conscious of the, you know, the shooting out there.
What did, Stephen, maybe you know, what did they do before? How long has it been a shooting range? Do we have any idea?
Can't remember when we built it. It's been, I suppose it's probably been at least 10 years, I would guess, somewhere around there.
So once it was stopped being used, because I know it was publicly, there was some use to it prior to.
We kind of, I think originally kind of down below the landfill, we're kind of, they did a little shooting there, but that it, it really wasn't set up to do any training at and everything, so we built, we built the gun range at Wilcox. Because basically, all that was a dumping area for everybody, so we kind of, we kind of fixed that up, you know.
And so currently, does the landowners going past that, you know, to be able to farm, that's the entrance in which they go?
They have to, they have to come through the gate. Yeah.
Sounds like some, you know, details have to be, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Those things would all definitely be considered. The process of which this would kind of go forward, if it were to go forward, is we would RFP out an engineering and design company, so it'd be professional engineering company that would do the work. Then we would have a conceptual design review with the county, probably the sheriff's office as well. And then we'd probably also make it open to the public since it is public land. And then, once that would get approved, it would move into a preliminary design phase, which would also get reviewed by the county and the sheriff's office and the public, and then also a final design. And so that you wouldn't just be left in the dark throughout the project. It would be something that we'd be working with you guys constantly.
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, I think there's probably only two landowners that probably access through that gate now, but I could be wrong, but I think there's only two that would really affect. The other, on the south side there, they can access from, I can't remember, Saratoga Drive or wherever that road is over there.
So what, are you just needing support from us or what is it exactly you're needing from us?
This was more or less just to get the idea going.
Okay.
Obviously, I don't expect an answer today if you guys are interested in going forward with the project or not. Basically, we're looking at just seeing where you guys stand and then looking at, is this a potential project going forward that we could get into a design stage?
I guess the person that's going to affect most would be Steve, so.
Yeah.
Are you in favor? I'm assuming you're in favor of this, Steve?
Yeah, basically, I just applied to come here, so you guys could get in on the ground floor because here, I did send an email from here to let everybody know this could potentially happen. So just so everybody's on the same page starting out, if you guys had a department on that, now's the time to start.
I guess what I would like, Steve, Isaac, what, what I'd like to see maybe when we do start doing all this dirtwork, if we could get incorporated some type of 100 yard range while we're at it out there or something, you know, a longer range. Because right now, it's kind of convoluted on how we do that.
Yeah, I think these are just comments that Ryan can take back as they start formulating. If nobody has any heartburn and, and you want to move forward, then he can take these comments, take them back, and he knows kind of what we're thinking, what you're thinking, what the sheriff's department is thinking, so it can, you know, kind of be the best of both worlds. On the landowner, I think the main thing that field up above, it can't be accessed from the north, but there might, maybe there'd be a way to get across Honey Creek to the north of that that would allow that landowner to come across and eliminate his need for easement through there. I don't know if that's possible or not, but that was the main thing, at least years ago when we did it, is he couldn't get past Honey Creek.
Right.
So I'm sure that's probably the same thing, but maybe on the property line, there might be a way to work that out.
Yeah, that's, that's the far north or the north property owner, but then there's another one in between there. Linger, I think Jack Linger owns some property in there.
Yeah, Jack owns to the east of us.
Okay.
I think is where he's at, but I don't know if he can access from the south or not.
I don't think so.
Okay.
I, I'm not, I really don't think so. Well, unless he had an easement through, gosh, I can't think of their name now. I mean, there, there was a whole bunch of, part of that on the, on the east side there, east, I call it south, you know, okay. Was a, a family, a, a group of people that own part of that, and then, and then Jack's kind of in the middle, I think, somewhere.
Yeah, I think that's right. I think those might be absentee. Last I heard, they lived like somewhere in Colorado.
Well, I think one of them lives in Marshalltown. That'd be, gosh darn it. Nicholson.
I mean, as long as there's no county out.
Johnny?
Huh?
Johnny Nichols?
Not Johnny.
Not to, not to, not to jump in, but as long as there's no negative impacts to any of the landowners other than access, which sounds like something we can work out in the process. There's no county funds that are going to be expended and it's probably going to be ultimately a good for wildlife and for the adjacent landowners. It sounds like a project that.
And beautifies the, the land.
I don't have any problems.
Yeah, I think it's something we, we would be in favor of.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Appreciate. Just a lot of details to work out.
You bet. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to close discussion.
So move.
Second. Johnner.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Ramey.
Hi.
Onto item number two is Kelly Myers with Skinner and Pashke, our legislative update. Kelly.
Good morning. Hi, it's good to see you all.
Hi. Invited you down to look, give us, the board and the public also just a little recap what you saw legislatively, and then I'm sure the board's probably gonna have a few questions.
Sure. We had a busy session, you know, we started right out of the gate with the governor giving her condition of the state and outlining what her priorities were for this year. And if she didn't get them all, I'm not sure what was left because she pretty much knocked it out of the park as far as her priorities go. Right out of the gate, she got educational savings accounts. Some people call them vouchers, depending on what side of the issue you're on, but ESAs did pass and that was done early on in February and she quick, that was a quick turnaround. She quickly signed that. There's some news this morning about rules being released on how to apply for those funds. I've not yet had a chance to review administrative rules, but I did anticipate some coming out to give more structure and guidelines potentially to that program. Her other priority was tort reform, both medical malpractice and commercial trucking liability, trucker, tort reform, which puts caps on non-economic damages to the tune of $1 million unless a hospital, and then it's $2 million. And then there's also punitive damages on those medical malpractice damages as well. Truck accident liability basically limits liability of employers of a commercial trucking company under the negligent hiring theory, as far as respond yet superior, meaning, you know, the employer being liable for the employee's actions. There's some, a lot of exceptions in that though, and if someone is drunk driving or there's a violation that they'd be doing under federal trucking laws, then that would be exempted from that.
Can I ask you a quick question? And the tort reform before, was there caps?
There was, what they called a soft cap before, but this furthers the cap. Um, opioid and fentanyl overdose, that was another priority that she had. It's a crisis everywhere, particularly in Iowa, and so there was a piece of legislation that increased penalties for drug dealers essentially, and, you know, if you were a dealer that's involved and, and someone died, that you would now have a live criminal liability for that as well. Hoping to, of course, fend off some of this fentanyl drug dealing. Another huge piece of legislation, I think it was 1,700 pages, was her government reorganization bill. And she wanted to take, and she did take, 34 executive branch agencies down to 17 now. That frankly passed in record time with very few amendments, mostly just little technical things. It kind of wasn't even up for discussion, frankly. It just came down, they slammed it through, and it passed.
Kelly, what's the estimated savings to the taxpayer for that reorg?
Well, I think the jury's out on that because she's saying it'll save money in the long run. But
They don't have.
Right now, they don't really know, and you know, there's gonna be work to actually do it on the front end, so I'd have to take a look at the fiscal note, which I'm not even sure is out, but I'd have to take a look at that to know for sure.
And I did check some of those fiscal notes and I didn't see anything really current.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, speaking of fiscal notes, another priority for not only the governor, but the House and the Senate was property tax. And it was so important, the House put out House File 1, making a statement that property tax reduction or property tax reform was their most important priority this year. The Senate had two bills. They, Senator Dawson is the Ways and Means Chair, and he spoke a lot about how his vision was that both these bills would work in conjunction with each other. Ultimately, those two bills did not pass. They ended up taking bits of the House bill and bits of the Senate bill and put them together in the House bill, House File 718. And that was a, gosh, I want to say a 70 or 80 page bill as well. Mark did come to the Capitol. I had a chance to talk with Barb Kniff McCollough, who is Vice Chair of House Ways and Means. You know, arguably, she has a lot of input, being the Vice Chair of Ways and Means in the House, on how they were gonna structure property tax. To be honest, the House was so busy doing all these other priorities that it, property tax got kind of, you know, just kicked to the last minute, if you will, and we, we continued to have those discussions. I know Keisha also met with Barb about ta, the property tax issue as well, and I know Mark and Keisha gave different ideas about the formula and how the formula could be addressed. And ultimately, they kind of addressed the formula, but really not. So what they ended up doing is they established three different tiers of county and city. And it's gonna be based on the growth of revenues of assessed values. So the one category would be under 3%. The second category would be 3 to 6% of assessed value growth, and then the third category would be over 6%. And that would require revenue growth above certain limits to be used to reduce property taxes. The bill also strikes some levies such as the Public Recreation Property Tax Levy, that'll be phased out by fiscal year 2028. And also the Bruce, I can't even say this, brucellosis and tuberculosis levies, those are stricken as well, and those will go to now estate appropriation through.
I know you're all wondering how much that's gonna save on your property taxes.
Right?
Right there, right?
0.0018 cents.
And the technical answer, Jake, is?
Very little.
Okay. Um, on the county level.
Sorry, Kelly.
Yeah, you're good. It caps the county levy rate at 350 for basic and 395 for rural services. It strikes emergency reasons for levying additional property taxes, but allows those increases relative, relative to purposes if they're approved at an election. Also caps cities levy rates at 850, or excuse me, 810, excuse me. And also strikes their emergency reasons as well unless it's an election. The bonding thresholds, we saw a bill in the Senate initially that was gonna reduce the amount of bonding that you could do without taking it to an election, but this bill ultimately increased the amount, the thresholds by 30%. The bill also requires elections and notices, requires a notice for a general obligation bond to include estimates of the property tax increases and includes requirements on mailing notices. Limits elections to once a year.
It doesn't, and when you say once a year, it doesn't, because I thought it had something to do with, it had to be when the general elections were.
Yeah, yeah. The first Tuesday in November, after the first Monday in November. Um, budgets makes April 30th, the budget certification day, adds requirements for certifying local budgets, including on reports made by auditors, statements to taxpayers, budget hearings and other matters, and requirements to post notices of those on the internet. I think what they're aiming for is to give the public more transparency on where their tax dollars are going, to have more of a say on any increases to those taxes and get more involved in the process. Also, there was a number of tax credits that were included. It phases and increases in the homestead credit for seniors to 6,500 by 2027, and increases the military property tax by $4,000. Exempts the credit from requirements to be fully funded.
But Kelly, that is just based on taxable evaluation. That's not, so everybody knows that.
Yeah, right.
Off the, yeah, the top of the valuation. It's not necessarily what you're paying in your, your taxes.
It just reduces your value, and that then the function is what your taxable value off of that, it's gonna reduce it, yeah.
So one of the things that we had worked for and ultimately ended up in the property tax bill was allowing the county treasurers to charge a non-resident convenience fee of $10 for issuing a license. It, so it does not allow the fee if the non-resident pays property taxes in the county, though. That was a bill, one of two, that we've also been lending our support and advocating for and lobbying at the lobby with the Treasurers Association. Senator Dawson had made clear since last year, when I talked to him, about he didn't see any county fees increasing unless property, unless it was rolled into some sort of property tax reform. What's hanging out there is the car titling fee, which would be increased by $10. That was not included in this legislation. That's House File 674. The bill did pass the House, but it did not advance in the Senate, but it does remain alive for next year. So, you know, this is our first year of a two-year general assembly, so fingers crossed that we can get that over the finish line. Because multiple legislators have said that this is a good start to property tax reform, meaning they intend to come back next year. I mean, the Senate really worked, I mean, quite a lot on their two bills. There was a lot of pushback on those bills. A lot of folks had things to say about it. The House published their bill and then they had a subcommittee on their bill, their ideas that even the Iwas for tax, Iowa Taxpayers Association, excuse me, pushed back on because they had an idea that, you know, like, let's do what California does and cap out valuations, and even Iowa Taxpayers Association was like, oh, no, 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 I don't think we want to do what California is doing. Because there was all kinds of problems with that, and so they kind of reeled it back in and thought, okay, let's see. Um, because there was all kinds of problems with that and so they kind of um, reeled it back in and thought, okay, let's see what, what we're going to do. And it sort of got down to the, frankly, in my opinion, the wire at the end. Because the, the Senate was like, we're going to do something on property tax, the House wanted to do something on property tax. But they just couldn't kind of get there until the very end, when there was frankly pressure to um, get something over the finish line. So that, that they could adjourn for the year.
I have a question for you though.
Yeah.
Next year, since um, when it comes to the treasures, it's already, I mean, does it have to then start back in the Senate?
Or does it? No, so it's passed the House, so the Senate can bring up the bill.
Good.
It's already in ways and means and they can pass it and send it to the governor, you know. To it, it'll have to bounce back to the House where the House can either concur or make changes. And then there's a limit on how many times you can volley it and, but it could, the Senate could bring it up and, and pass it. Um, I intend to have conversations with Senator Dawson about that and see kind of like what he's thinking now. Um, you know, is he still going to tie this to property tax? I'm, I'm not really sure why that didn't get over the finish line and. Things move so fast at the very end that things just start getting thrown overboard frankly, because you know, they got to focus on what they're going to do. And bring people together, so um, that might have been it, maybe it was like, hey, we just didn't have enough time to get it done and that's what I'm hopeful for. Is that he just said, hey, we didn't have time to get this done, but we intend to pick it up next year. I'll follow up on that one for sure with him. Um, ironically, I've been monitoring the um, legislative website and there has not been a current fiscal note. On the bill that ultimately passed, there are a couple fiscal notes, um, one on House File Seven Eighteen back in April of twenty-four. But that was the bill that was not ultimately passed, it was amended. And what has, was amended and passed does not have a current fiscal note and. Um, at this point, I don't think they're even going to do one because they didn't have time to get it done before session was out and so I don't know that we will have.
Which one are you talking?
House File Seven Eighteen, the property tax bill that ultimately passed.
And I don't know how they would do this Kelly, I mean, I appreciate you keeping track of all this stuff and helping us out in the meetings and the chance to talk. But what is it in essence, a process bill? I mean, that's all they passed, they made it harder for counties, harder for municipalities to go through the process. Of utilizing the only method we have for roads, economic development, raises. So it's a process bill, other than those two tax credit items. For veterans and for the elderly, there's nothing wrong with that, but to quantify what the actual financial impact will be. Is impossible.
Well, they've been floating out that the, uh, senior and, and veteran tax credits would be about fifty million dollars.
Fifty to fifty-seven million is what they've said.
And then everything else would be the other fifty million for a total of a hundred million in savings, that's what they said.
Slow everybody down, they won't know how to do the process, it'll take two years or three years to do economic development. Instead of what we're doing, so for rural counties, they're gonna, there's already no development, now there truly will be no development. And if we had to do the VA under these rules, we probably wouldn't do it.
Um, I do think that we continue to carry the message of how Marion County is doing things, wants to do things. Because Marion County, it was, it was great to be able to stand up there and say, Marion County is actually reduced, it's supplemental. And I, I, I got some shocked looks frankly from that and so our message, my message to legislators was is. Not every local government is a bad actor, there, there are local governments out there trying to give. Uh, property tax break, slow this assessed value growth, so that it's not so harsh on the citizens of their. Uh, local communities, um, I do think it had some impact because I think there was sort of a angry mindset. To some local governments and what they had seen or believed was happening, I don't know if it's true or not. But there was sort of a narrative that, well, some of these um, big communities that are booming in particular are just saying, okay, we have all this to spend. And spending it instead of saying, okay, um, with our revenue and, you know. And, and there's sort of a philosophical budgeting difference on, um, you know. Is a county setting its budget and then taxing to meet the budget? Or is the county or city looking at their revenues and then saying what their budget is for their revenues? And, you know, a conservative Republican House and Senate was saying, it should be the way the state does it. You should look at what the revenues are and then set your budget and there was a belief whether or not it's true or not, was that some counties are, were doing the opposite.
So how much did the state budget go up? How much is the projected increase this year?
I don't know where it finally landed.
Was it seven percent?
Okay, it was.
Seven to eight percent.
Eight billion something that.
It was eight, seven, last year was eight, eight, about eight, two, eight, three, they were going to have a seven percent increase, did it end up there?
I, I can't tell you that, I don't know right now, I didn't check that.
Okay, so they, so they, they matched their revenues to their expenses.
Yeah.
Well, they would tell you that they can only spend ninety-eight percent for the constitution and so that.
But I will say, I do.
Sorry Kelly, it's not you.
I'm just the messenger.
These, these people, they, they don't come and visit us. We don't hear from our electeds that come down and talk to us, you talk about Marion County, when have any of our state representatives come here to learn what we do? I, I think we've got some great people, but if you don't even know how counties budget. Which we have to re-educate every single year, you have to do it at the treasurer level, you have to do it at the auditor level. Every year we're talking the same stuff and they come up with process bills that they estimate will save a hundred million dollars. They get their golf clap and then it doesn't save a hundred million dollars, oh, and they raise their budget seven percent. Which is almost exclusively based on what? Income taxes and fees. Cause property tax comes our way. So, uh, it, it's, it's very hypocritical to me that these people set these standards. Don't talk to the people on the street level, especially to a county like Marion, where we've been conscientious about lowering levy rates. And still doing economic development. The, the best use of property tax money is the creation of more property tax money, but they don't understand that. Cause we put it into roads, that's a depreciating asset. We put it into buildings, it's a depreciating asset. If we don't grow our population or retain our workforce, we won't have property taxes to work with anymore, they won't have to reduce them. They will reduce, anyway, there you go.
And I think we just keep carrying that message and try to, I mean, I think we all would agree that the property tax formula. Is very confusing and it's, it's for any, anybody that's involved in it, I mean. If, unless you're probably a Department of Revenue or Jake or, you know, maybe you guys, it's really difficult to the, for the layperson to understand how.
The whole property tax formula and what you're trying to explain to somebody, how the process works is.
I don't think the average Joe can look at their, you know, assessment and go, okay, I know next year this is how much it's going to be or whatever. Because then you think, you have to factor in this rollback that the state, you know, implements and then that change. So anyway, um.
Sorry Kelly, you, 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 you know where I'm at on this stuff.
I know.
The formula is wrong, what drove increased values was federal monetary policy. If anybody's really honest, they'll understand that, the state chose to do this, that's not what did it, that's not what did it, that's not what did it. But that's what did it, we didn't change our levy.
Right.
So how does it go up if we don't change our levy? Does Keisha drive around and set values for homes? Do I? Do Steve? Maybe Chris goes around and values them.
The answer is no to all that.
Yeah, we don't, we don't, they have a process driven by the Department of Revenue that they won't touch. And to, unless they go through this reorg of these agencies, they really wanted to do something, they look into how they function. But they won't do that, there you go.
None of them will, none of them will touch that and I've asked.
Well, we've all asked, we've all asked. Been on this for ten years.
Well, um, the good news or not so good news, I'm not sure, um, is there'll probably be another property tax bill next year, they.
They'll get it right this time.
Um, last year they, or this, last year they had um, a bill to fund um, the water quality. I will, and that did not pass and I know that that continues to be a passion for the Senate anyway.
They'll roll back the tax on measles, mumps and rubella next year.
Also, I mean, we have to continue to put on a radar, you know, you're talking about I will and how they were going to find, fund I will was through lost. Local option sales.
Well, that was one way, yes, increase in sales tax was another way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Kelly, next year.
Yes.
With all the friends I make every year. We'll, we'll go up there again and try to, then maybe if we can get out in front and. You know, the one thing we could potentially do, we haven't done it because I've been kind of relying on them, like I pointed out in the one meeting with Barb. You're in a financial capital, Des Moines, full of actuarial. Uh, people who are very good, they could work on the formula and outsource this to those folks and say, come up with some ideas for us. But maybe we'll have to do that ourselves and come up with an idea.
I think having, um, you know, another meeting with our legislators, you know, after redistricting and the elections, I mean, we got new legislators. We just have to continue to talk to them about your perspective, educate them on the property tax. System, the budget, the formula, and so that when they go back, they have a better understanding of how it works. And how it impacts you all as well.
Thanks Kelly, appreciate it.
A couple other bills that we followed up there, just to give an update on, um, there was several variations of an emergency management bill this year. Um, Senate File Five Seventy and House File Seven Oh Five, I believe are the latest um, versions. They did not get over the finish line, frankly, there was disagreements by the stakeholders and the legislators. Um, on whether or not uh, EMA should be able to uh, certify a levy instead of the county board of supervisors. Uh, both bills remain alive for next session, the Senate had um, its own version, it ultimately passed and sent back to the House. But in the final days of uh, the session, I don't think the House members had been. Communicating about this Senate amendment maybe, or didn't understand that it was going to be what it was. And so there was just not time to continue to work on that and so it failed. Um, another bill was a compensation boards, it also stalled, House File Three Fourteen was passed by the House. And the Senate worked on the bill and mending it, sent it back to the House on April twenty-seventh. And I think it just um, fell to the same fate frankly, there was not enough time to continue working on it. By that time, it was like, let's get property tax done, we've got to focus on what our priorities are. And if that was not a priority of leadership at that time, I think it went to the wayside. Um, other issues that were pretty controversial, um, eminent domain and the liquid carbon pipeline. Um, nothing, well, the House passed a bill and sent it over to the Senate and the Senate, it, it died in the Senate. So um, nothing was done to address Iowans' concerns on that. And I will um, give props to the, I don't know if they were landowner, definitely must have been landowners. Um, folks came almost every single day to the legislature or the, the Capitol to advocate. On restricting the use of eminent domain for the liquid carbon pipeline, um, but ultimately, nothing was addressed on that. There were other uh, controversial issues that didn't necessarily impact the county, but you know, the child labor. Uh, bill was passed, um, I just saw something yesterday that said, while the state law was passed. It, i- if businesses want to, you know, hire younger children and put them in um. Work plans or, you know, in hazardous or dangerous jobs that they used to not be able to, it would violate federal law still. So now that we're going to have the state law versus federal law system and I'm not sure that there's uh, guidance out yet on that. Um, there was also controversial bills, um, there was a lot of education bills this year, but a lot of. Uh, controversial bills, um, pro- prohibitions on teaching sexuality in schools, the prohibition on transgender surgeries for children. Um, all of those were passed about mid-session or so. Um, oh, one of the things I wanted to mention is. When we were able to get a million dollars from RIF last year, um, I was monitoring the rebuild Iowa infrastructure fund. This year and the initial proposal that came out had a million dollars for each demolition and rehabilitation funds and. Um, I know I sent it to Keisha or maybe Carla and we talked about, hey, let's maybe try to get the other fund this year. But um, in the negotiations, that ended up getting stripped out and the money ended up with being scooped for other projects frankly. Um, and so we will talk next year about whether that continues to get funded. I have a hunch that, I mean, nobody's told me this, I have a hunch that if there's not a imminent project that they want to spend the money on. Or that they know of, maybe that money just gets diverted, um, and doesn't get funded for that particular year. Um, so we'll see, I know that there we had a lot of um, asks, um, for instance, for the diagnostic lab. At the um, veterinary services at Iowa State. They do, um, some economic development changes, different tax credits and a major econ development bill. That was a huge focus of workforce development this year. They did do a levy improvement fund, establishing a levy improvement fund in RIF, which appropriates five million from the fund from wagering taxes. For the next five years and directs the Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management to use the money to repair and construct levies. And establish an office for levy safety in the department. Another thing that would potentially impact the county. Those are the major bills that we monitored on behalf of the county this year, is there any further questions you have on anything else?
Tyler.
So on the property tax bill, did they strip out the language about. Penalizing the supplemental funds if you are above the three percent or six percent caps on the general or rural services?
Well, it caps it and then if it goes above that, it directs the counties to use that money to pay down, to reduce property taxes.
From the, that fund, like the general or the rural services or from the supplemental funds?
I don't.
Cause I don't know if it was this year, but maybe last year.
I have to double check, but I don't think it penalizes the supplemental, it kept the general basic and the rural.
Okay. Um, I have a couple other comments regarding some of the legislation. So the budget deadline of April thirty may become problematic with our secondary road budget, our deadline is still April fifteenth statutorily. Didn't become an issue this year because we passed them on the same day, uh, I think we did the county's budget and then. Say, later in that board meeting we did, but depending on how meetings lay out and where we're at in the budget process in the future, that may become problematic. County Engineers Association is working on that to get it changed uh, to, to align or be later than. Uh, the county's budget deadline. Um, and then, I don't know the number, but the all systems overweight permit was amended. It was passed last year with amended this year. Basically, last year they gave us uh, a two or three year grace period counties to evaluate our roads. Evaluate our bridges to, and then opt in on certain road segments that we want to allow. The all systems overweight permit on. So we had started down through that process last year, um, this year they, they are now forcing us. Forcing counties to include all paved road, paved farm to market roads. Must be included in the all systems permit. Luckily, I have just finished evaluating our paved road bridges or had our cons, our bridge inspection consultant re-rate all of our bridges. So. This is a permit to allow you to go over eighty thousand pounds, basically is what it means. And the permit fee is five hundred dollars, most people are going to get the permit because if they're overweight by one pound. It's cheaper to pay a five hundred dollar permit fee than it is a ticket, so regardless. Everyone that's a holler in Marion County, commercial. Or agricultural is wanting a permit and we're getting lots and lots of phone calls regarding this. Um, currently, we have only opted in on two roads, two paved roads that did not have a bridge. And we did that to, to get in line for funding and we have been receiving funding as of January one, I think. In total, for the first three months of the year. In total, for the first three months of the year, it's around twenty four thousand dollars, which is a lot more than we expected to receive. But not all counties have opted in to date. So, once all counties opt in, that distribution will be spread out and our. Marion County's allocation will be reduced. What it, really what it means is we're going to spend more money on bridge, rerating all of our bridges. Uh, because the new language this year also says that. They can take the shortest route, even if the county doesn't include that particular road segment. A hauler may take the shortest route from where the truck is loaded to the state route or county farm-to-market route, paved route. Well, our trucks are all loaded in the field, so that's every route. So we're going to be rerating every bridge, uh, for the new loads. These do not align with. The current state permitted loads, that's why we have to re-rate everything because there's. This truck configuration is different than anything we've seen in the past. And there's more federal legislation coming down regarding. Emergency vehicles and where we'll have to re-rate bridges in the future, but we have a longer grace period on that and are not currently looking at that.
So the fees or the income in which you're receiving is probably not going to offset what. When you're rerating and then people are asking for, uh, is it an overload type?
Yeah, so they're allowed to go twelve percent over legal, so. An eighty thousand pound truck can go just under ninety and, and it's not limited, so. You've probably heard the governor's harvest proclamation over the years. It allows twelve and a half percent over on five axle trucks. This allows five, six, and seven axle trucks all to be twelve percent over, which is. Another difference that we've never seen that's creating some challenges for counties and cities.
Very much so. Definitely something maybe we'll have to talk about legislatively if there's any correction there that we can, you know.
Which throws the burden on us to try to, try to maintain our bridges and roads.
Would you say the exemption process then has gotten more lenient, Tyler?
The, the what?
The ability to go twelve percent over has gotten more stringent or more lenient.
Oh, more, uh, more lenient.
And you're gonna, and you're gonna get a permit that they're gonna, people are gonna pay five hundred bucks for, is that what I?
Yeah, a- and to me, the challenge is.
Not to ask though.
Is the, the guy who's hauling for a farmer who doesn't technically have to have a CDL or he may or may not have a CDL. He only knows what roads are allowed if he logs in online to look at the. GIS map. Otherwise, they don't, they don't have a permit in their truck that says. These are the roads I'm allowed to haul on, like all of our other oversized and overweight permits.
Right.
So. So we, we've got to look at our entire system, and, and it's just going to be, you know, more gravel loss.
I was gonna say. It goes to what we were talking about with the whole property tax reform. These are depreciating assets, and then they pass these laws and the unintended consequences, now it will cost more money.
Right.
To, to upkeep, to take care of these secondary roads as a result of other legislation that they pass. Because they don't understand the relationship between the two.
Basically, it's made it a free-for-all, Mark.
Yeah, that's what it sounded, that's what it sounded like, Steve. I, I appreciate that.
I think the direction, this is just my personal opinion, but I think the direction. A lot of things are pointing towards is a statewide permitting system, so counties are not involved with permitting oversized and overweight loads in the future. You know, because there's big, there's software being developed to rate bridges basically at the click of a button throughout the state, so we're gonna lose. All control, um, and it's just gonna be, they'll look at the bridge, if the bridge is fine, doesn't matter what the county's pavement condition is.
And that's gonna make it better. Ask him on public health, Rachel on mental health, how, how much better state control of everything works. Yeah.
Sounds like we need to have some discussions with maybe the D O P chair, we can do that.
The. Legislative liaison for the County Engineers Association has lots of, lots of charts and figures on. The increased axle loads and how, increased weights and how that exponentially damages pavements and how that affects bridges and. There's lots of information out there. We've tried.
And then, you know, you bring in fuel tax and, you know, possibly the fuel tax, you know, especially with vehicles. I mean, how is that gonna affect when you're not getting as much revenue overall in your budget? Um, you know, you're trying to balance, you know, when we have. This situation, but then we also have more electric vehicles and things like that, so you're not paying that, um, you know. Through the gasoline tax, so yeah, there's, there's a lot of issues that could be rising for us.
Tyler, why don't you get me some of that data and information and I'll have some conversation? Okay.
Good point.
Kelly, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Entertain a motion to close discussion.
So moved.
Second.
McCombs.
Hi.
Raimi.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thanks, Kelly. Thankless task.
Item number three, um, it's the public hearing portion for the Marion County, uh. Board of Supervisors intend to transfer property via quick claim deed to the city of Knoxville as part of the VA campus. Property improvements. You know, we had discussed, uh, some of this last.
Yep, this is just the.
Public hearing portion.
Finalize that process. We've done the twenty eighty amendments, both and, uh, our board and the city council have approved. Uh, those changes. I think this is just the final step in transferring ownership of that. Section and Jake, you had to go through some process here to get that done, maybe just tell us what that is.
Um, so the, um. County owns the entire VA com- complex, the city is working on development, um, and the. Image on the bottom is the proposed subdivision. Believe, um, it's been some variation through the city and it's going to have another variation, but in essence, to, um, just to assist with the. Whole process of, uh, getting the subdivision filed and then marketing the lots and selling the lots that it was deemed, um, advantageous to have. That individual piece of property directly owned by the city before, so, uh, rules for, um. Entities like us in the city to, to sell property, you have to go through a process. So, um, the city then reached out to their engineers and they, um, created a parcel J, which is a plot of survey. To create the borders that will lay directly over the new subdivision, and that's what the county is using to transfer, um. Parcel J of that quarter, uh, to the city of Knoxville, maintain ownership of the rest. Uh, as the future development comes in, we'll essentially be doing the same thing. Then everything lying within parcel J will now, um, be titled to the city of Knoxville through a quick claim deed process, and they can move forward with their, um. Development plans.
Very good, thank you.
Is there any public comments? Seeing none. Entertain, uh, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Raimi.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Combs.
Hi.
Item number four is the resolution of twenty twenty-three fifty-nine. It's a resolution making the final determination regarding disposal of the real estate. There's no further discussion, entertain a motion for approval.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifty-nine.
Second.
John.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Raimi.
Hi.
On to item number five, this is the public hearing portion. Um, Board of Supervisors will be holding the public hearing and regarding, uh, this is the obligation. Authorization of a loan agreement, uh, and issuance of not to exceed two point seven and a half million. For the capital loans notes for the Atkins Pleasantville.
Yep.
And this is something we discussed.
Completes the, completes the process for issuing the debt, uh, Pleasantville doesn't need the money right away. They're. Working on the turn lanes for that project, but, uh, it finalizes that process.
Hearing, is there anybody in the public? Not seeing none, entertain motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
I'll second.
McCombs.
Hi.
Raimi.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Item number six is the resolution of twenty twenty-three sixty. Um, this is the resolution to not to, not to exceed two point seven and a half million for the capital loan notes for the Atkins project.
Yeah, so this just, uh, again, codifies what we have set out to do with the city of Pleasantville. Uh, I think one thing to note, given our discussions in the previous agenda item with Kelly on property taxes. Uh, in our Moody's call that Jake and I and Michael Maloney participated in, we got our full report back. And Marion County, uh, was AA three, if I remember right, Jake.
I believe that's the, that's it.
Which, for those of you in the financial world, that's an outstanding rating. Uh, we were, uh, complimented on our financial management, uh, our reserves, uh, and, and overall capacity. Uh, to be able to support the obligations that we are issuing. So from a, from a group that does companies, Fortune five hundred companies, Marion County. Uh, was considered to be, uh, was very highly regarded from a financial perspective. Um, there are risks and those attendant risks are the things we've talked about, population, retention of our workforce. Um, and they highlighted those as well, and those are the things we've all talked about in our meetings as to why we're doing the things that we're doing. Um, we've had ten years of essentially flat population growth in Marion County. And we need more people because that's how you reduce your property tax burden. That's the math of property taxes, so, uh, anyway, good call. Jake, thank you for all your work. Again, you've been my right hand in all this, so. Couldn't do it without you, bud.
No further discussion, board, or entertain a motion for resolution twenty twenty-three sixty.
So moved to approve.
Second.
Raimi.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Call.
Hi.
Item number seven is resolution twenty twenty-three sixty-one, which is the resolution approving the official statement.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three sixty-one.
Second.
John.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Raimi.
Hi.
Item number eight, the Marion County Courthouse Ground Special Event, it's the girls' night out. Chris, is Chris here? Is there anybody on for this? I know that we've had this, we've seen this, um, more than once, or do you have any questions?
No. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
McCombs.
Hi.
Raimi.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
So you had your shot.
Item number nine is, uh, tobacco permit renewal applications. We have two here for Keener Oil Company. And Harvey and New Star Newton Impella is, um, I believe the sheriff had made comments that, uh, he had no concerns.
If he has no concerns, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Raimi.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Call.
Hi.
Item ten is, uh, discussion or appointment of the Marion County Deputy Medical Examiner, uh, Dr. Shannon Remington. This is, would be just adding another additional, um, deputy medical examiner. So, pretty straightforward, we've seen these in the past, so.
Kim, anything you want to add?
We're anticipating some changes and we just need, need another one, um, to be, uh, trained and ready to go.
Okay, very good.
No further discussion, will entertain a motion for.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
John.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Raimi.
Hi.
Number eleven is resolution twenty twenty-three fifty-eight, um. Is authorization destruction of a non-permanent records in the Marion County Auditor's Office, Jake.
So this is mine, uh, this is something that's new, that hasn't been put forth to you, the actual process of, um. Doing shredding projects, uh, or we, we shred it, we don't, um, just put in the garbage. But this is, uh, always a cleanup after, uh, each election, there's time periods required to maintain. Certain documents, um, over, over a period of time, like local elections at six months, uh, federal elections is twenty-two months, so. People may or may not realize, but after an election, we keep everything. We keep every envelope, we keep every eligibility slip, we keep the delivery envelope, the. The affidavit, we, we have, um. Boxes and piles that we maintain and keep through all, uh, appropriate data periods. Um, after elections, if there's things like that, so there's a listing that we follow for each election. And we just rotate in and out each year. Um, there are things that we keep permanently as well, like, uh, abstracts, uh, tally books, um. We also run, um, audit reports off of our election equipment, stuff like, uh, things like that are kept. Recently, we learned in a meeting that it was, um, appropriate to have the Board of Supervisors authorize us to, um, destroy. Um, the non-permanent records, uh, records is a, materials is a, is a word I like better, I guess. Um, such as the, the used envelopes and the. The notes that we took and the time sheets and things like that for poll workers, uh, the notifications we send out to them that they return. We literally keep everything. So the time periods have passed for the two elections, um, uh, that you see there on the board, and, uh. We will be continuing to do this moving forward when we, um, rotate our piles. And we did intentionally keep the twenty twenty election stuff longer, just in, from the environment, so that was on me. Uh, that we did keep that longer than we normally would, that we feel it's appropriate, and, uh, most counties have, there's only a limited amount of space that we can keep stuff. And so, um, we have everything permanent that we need to. So I recommend or request your approval of this.
For the questions or discussion?
Now, I'll make a motion to approve twenty twenty-three dash fifty-eight.
Second.
McCombs.
Hi.
Raimi.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Item twelve is the authorization of the termination of the twenty eighty agreement, uh, between ISAC and. Uh, the group benefits, the voluntary A D and D, Lisa.
Okay, so just to give you a little background, um, the ISAC insurance is voluntary accidental death and dismemberment only. Um, I could go back in our records back to nineteen ninety-five, um, and I think it's been here longer than that. Um, this was an option for employees when we did not have AFLAC, we didn't have any. Um, we really didn't have any volunteer benefits, we didn't have volunteer life, we didn't have any of those benefits. Um, it's a benefit that we have, um, currently we have fourteen on, um, as of July one, we'll only have twelve. Um, I believe it's time to update, um. It's not part of our actual renewal system, so it's not in the products with Holmes Murphy currently. Um, so I had seeked out to, to, um. Terminate the twenty eighty agreement previously, in that agreement, it cites that we have to give notice to ISAC by April first. Um, missed that deadline, um, so was advised that, um. We just will put it on the table for next year. Um, ISAC came back and is requiring us to. Um, learn their system to, um. Take care of our fourteen employees, um, as far as their online system, enrolling people and all that good stuff. So I reached out to ISAC and said, hey, we only have fourteen people on the plan, it was our intent to, to leave this plan, we didn't give you sufficient notice. Would you entertain a, uh, would you entertain the idea of us leaving this product? And they graciously said that, that they would entertain that, so I come to you, ask you. Um, we have better benefits, I think, for these dollars that these employees are paying.
So Lisa, if we terminate this, this, uh. These two products, will they be, will those employees be able to change over? Are we still within our?
We are not in our, um, we are not in our, in open enrollment any longer.
Okay, so we'll, what will they, if they want it, what will they do? What will they have to do?
Most of these people already have, um, life insurance with us, there's some that don't. Um, there's an AFLAC product they could take, um.
Could they take it though? Could we?
I can look into seeing if we can open it up for these, uh, these twelve, we can do that.
Yeah, if you're gonna close, i- if somebody would want it, and these are usually bought in addition to life insurance, so they're supplemental.
And our life insurance has that in it.
Right.
Right?
I think one of the components of this, I have no problem terminating this if nobody wants the. I think one of the components of this, I have no problem terminating this. If nobody wants the product, there's no need to carry something that we don't have anybody on. But just to be sure that everybody, hey, you, you've got to, you'll have to wait a year to get on. Or we try to get some type of opening. So if somebody did want it, they could add that to their current benefit profile.
We can certainly do that. And remember too, back in the day, this is when we are um. Our group life insurance plan was ten thousand dollars per employee too. So we have, we have richer benefits today. So, but yes, I can look into see if we can um offer that to those employees. We can certainly do that.
So, so if you could do that and then maybe bring this back in the next meeting?
We can do that.
Would that be okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Question too.
Yeah, mine also.
Yep, alright.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Lisa.
Entertaining a motion to close discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Raimi?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Combs?
Aye.
Item thirteen is the public hearing portion for the FY twenty-three Marion County Budget Amendment Number One. Jake? Is this presented to us?
So annual process sometimes. Mostly, most generally, we have at least one budget amendment a year, just because budgets are set so far ahead. And um there needs to be a little bu- budget cleanup afterward. So sent out communication to all departments um some, several weeks back. It feels like this was kind of a while ago because of the timing element for notifications and things like that. So we've been working on this for a month and a half or so. But sent out notification to all departments. We try and do it after a, you know, a month end and um. Give it, give everybody a few weeks to look at their stuff um and have a deadline to submit any budget requests to you guys. Uh, very few requests from departments um outside of uh, outside of like the non-departmental um moving forward. So again, uh, some of these projects are things that are done. Um, yeah, uh, some like building projects or remodel projects or things like that.
Sorry, so Jake, the one point two?
Yep.
I'm sorry, I'm prob- I'm probably jumping ahead to the punchline here.
It's okay.
What is, what is that?
So are you talking, like, are you looking at the difference in the cash balance?
Just for the amendment.
Yeah, so um it is, uh, some of it, most, the majority of this amendment would be um the final touches of like the expenses for the VA demolition that were outside of the bond. That type of stuff, um some remodel construction here at thirty-fourteen. And then another big component, um that Steve sent quite a bit of communication on is the numbers are a little larger for Steve's um project and, and his, you know, uh, budget and the, the update that he does annually as well. So.
Some of it's, some of it's a timing issue.
Yeah, it's really not anybody asking. I mean, it's projects that were already completed. Uh, like I said, when you set a budget now and then.
Yep.
Didn't know how long the bond, the bonds were gonna last in those final payments to landfill and, and to like that type of thing. Um. So it, that's where the, the biggest numbers are in the non-departmental on those types of projects. Um, cleaning it up on the backside. The cash is there, the cash is, was spent. So like the month end cash balances that you guys have seen. Um, other than Steve's project that he's still ongoing and has definitely in hand, um, has already been spent.
Right.
So those, those, this isn't going to take your general fund or your uh particular funds that may be shown here. And all of a sudden drop those, that you are already seeing um most of these expenses.
But we're still, like I said, we, we went through this, some of this with Moody's as well. As far as current cash balance and everything else, and they were very, very complimentary.
Everything that we have been supplying to um, to Moody's or actually to, to either our, our turn law firm, Allers, or to D Davidson, and then goes through to Moody's, has either been out of our. Latest audit or our current balances. So all those in the um official statement that we just discussed earlier, that's all current.
Yep.
All that, all that due diligence um is, is all current.
Good, excellent.
But they also have any, oh, this is public hearing portion, sorry.
Yeah.
Public, does the public have any uh comments?
I'm speaking as public.
Seeing none, entertain uh motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
John?
Aye.
Combs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Resolution twenty twenty-three fifty-six is the adoption of the FY Marion County Budget Amendment Number One. Board, if there's no further discussion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Combs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Item number fifteen is the Resolution twenty twenty-three fifty-seven is the appropriation of the FY twenty-three Marion County Budget Amendment. One, entertain a motion.
To approve. Be, Jake, have we ever adopted something that we decided we can't spend?
Say that again? Adopted something that you say you can't.
Well, I mean, because that's what.
Just, yeah.
I, I, I've always loved this process.
I know.
Will approve it, but you can't spend it.
Right.
Alright.
Well, that would, yeah, yeah, well, we'll talk about appropriations for next fiscal.
Yeah, alright, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Emily's supposed to be keeping me in check and she's not doing it today. She's ignoring it, she's.
Raimi?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Combs?
Aye.
And Renee's not here.
Item number sixteen is the discussion or action on Marion County Properties.
Nah, yeah, I thought it'd be good to have a discussion. We've got three items that we've been talking about for a while. Two thousand three North Lincoln, is that Public Health? See, you, you wrote these in code. So now I have to know the addresses and I just know by the public health building, so.
The top one is the East.
And the top one is the annex, so. Just, I wanted to, where are we at with that? We've been talking about wanting to sell it. We know we have a group in there. We know we have to do some type of notice.
I think the.
And Jared reviewed the notice requirement.
I think that the last, the last action or the last discussion, uh, the County Attorney's Office was going to review the lease agreement with Department of Human Services Case Management.
Okay, so they have not done that yet.
I, I, I can't speak.
Okay, alright, is Jared, Jared, are you on?
He said he was listening, but he was also, he had court this morning, so.
Okay, so maybe we need to follow up. So just, anyway, keep it on our radar screen.
If I'm correct, doesn't that lease, lease come up in September?
That's what I was thinking, Steve. I just wanted to get a read on the notice and what we were going to do logistically with them and. We probably need to ratchet that up a little bit. It is May, well, soon to be June.
Yep, and just, it's, there's a case management side and then there's regular DHS.
Right.
So that's, the case management side is, it has the official lease. And when I, when I've been coming to work, there's been somebody in the building.
Okay, but the board's already indicated we want to try to dispose of this property, so. I think we've got to just decide what those next operational steps are and just need to get moving on that.
Yep, firm direction on what, you'll have to, like, if you dispose of the property, that would have to have the same process, just like you did at Personal J at the VA.
Right.
You'll have to decide how you, how you want to market it, if you want to market it, and then have public notice that you're intending to do that with timeframes. And then some sort of.
Okay.
Some sort of, however you want to market it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, thank you. So we'll have some follow-up there. I'll try to catch up with Jared. Um, these next two really go together, and that is to fire up the discussion again about. At least my, from my perspective. Wanting to move from this building to Public Health. The last major rainstorm we had, uh, I called Jeff and he said the building was, had water in it and I came out and looked and we had water in it. All the way through the cafeteria. Came in the next morning, or Monday morning, and I could smell the mold in it, or that, that musty smell. So I asked Renee to talk to Chris a little bit and give him, give us an idea on what it might cost. So Chris, I'm gonna put you on the spot. And she's, she gave me a a hundred and fifty thousand dollar estimate, so I want to make sure that's kind of what you told her ballpark, just to hook into the septic, tear out the walls, get the floor upgraded. And, and new gutters and roof into this building. Is that close?
It, it's very close. So the septic, which is the largest portion of that, I mean, I was asked. We've talked for years about getting off septic and hooking up a city sewer. And I was asked about that price, so that, that's a hundred thousand of that. Uh, and that is put in a lift station, because unfortunately our grade here versus where our city sewer line is, it's like one point seven five feet difference. So we'd have to put a lift station in place of a septic tank. So if, last winter per se, I pumped the septic here twice, and that was preemptive. Did not have to pump it. I pumped it twice just in case it did freeze up. We wouldn't have a backup of the building. So it, it's not even every winter that we have to do that. So long-term, would it be nice to be hooked up a city septic or city sewer? Absolutely. Is it an absolute necessity? No. So I would say the hundred thousand dollars that we're talking about there is not a half to spend, so I want to quantify that number. It's not a half to spend. You know, the outside of the building could be wrapped, the flashing around the windows could be done. Within five years, the roof needs to be replaced. I mean, we're getting close to that time where the life expectancy of the roof is gone. Gutters and, and in complete fairness. I could put eight-inch gutters on this thing, and when we get a three and a half to four-inch rainstorm in an hour, we're gonna have water issues. You know where I live? I live on a hill. A big rain, I have water issues. And I live on a hill, so three and a half, four inches of water over the course of an hour, you're gonna have issues no matter, no matter what. Um, it's not typical that we get water in the building during a rainstorm. Uh, when we get a big rainstorm, we do. There are some things we can do to mitigate that. I can tear that wall out. Probably raise the foundation a little bit there, and I can raise that with block and then water seal it and then build the wall back, and we're probably. Not going to have that issue again. So there are some things we can do. We all know that in the wintertime, the bathrooms freeze up. That's a fairly simple fix. I think I budgeted like five thousand to tear that wall out, re-insulate. Um, maybe rerun some plumbing. Problem is the plumbing runs through the slab and pops up right there, so uh we might rerun that. Spray foam it, something like that. So those, those numbers are not all necessities. That I was asked for a long-term, this is what we're looking at.
Well, yeah, right, because I asked for it. I mean, so that's what, that's what Renee got, was exactly what I asked for, which is. The long-term potential expenses, which you'll have that, plus there'll be other things in a building that ages, because you always do.
Every building.
Right? So I think the question for the board to continue to consider isn't just the, the narratives around moving, it's around the expenses of maintaining properties. Just like we're trying to sell properties and dispose of certain things. We've got a building, how much did we put into Public Health, Chris?
Between ARPA funds and then our normal county upgrades, uh, about six hundred thousand. You know, parking lot was redone. That was a massive expenditure that should last us the next twenty-five to thirty years. Uh, that is one thing I did not put on there is the parking lot out here. At some point in time, we do need to address the concrete out here, whether we do that in-house or we hire that out, that is going to have to be addressed. Um, you know, we have new air handlers, so the entire HVAC system is upgraded. We upgraded most of the plumbing. There is a brand-new fire uh detection system that is now monitored at Public Health, so those are basically what those expenses were.
Right. And Kim, we're still half-empty out there, three-quarter, where are we at population-wise in Public Health?
I should have counted how many offices we have open, but I think there are about eight or nine offices open. Um, we, and the ex, the expenses that, that he put into the building do not include the IT upgrades that we've done in the last year or so. Uh, we did about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars under a grant and um did IT upgrades. So that will be, that's another hundred and fifty thousand on top of what he's put into our building.
So seven hundred plus we put into it.
Yeah, yeah. So um, yeah, I would say there's probably about eight offices. And um with the IT upgrades, we have uh increased the number of conference spaces. So meeting rooms, basically, we, we have the, the training room and we redid all that. And then we redid the um electronics in the conference room. And now we have two smaller conference rooms in addition um that have screens as well.
Yeah, good, thank you. So yeah, so Chris, I appreciate it. Thank you. And knowing that there will be ongoing expense for this building as it continues to age. And it will need, whether it's parking lot or sewer, there'll eventually be that major expense, because there always is. Um, that we won't anticipate because there always is. And is it worth it from a fiscal standpoint to continue to spend money to support a structure where we've got open spaces? In a building we put seven hundred thousand dollars into, and it's not full. And potentially could even become less folks in there over time. What's that? Right, so it could go from nine spaces to thirteen, fourteen spaces. So that's the, that's the point I'm trying to make. When we talk about fiscal management, we just heard property taxes. Um, and how difficult it's going to be in the future. Uh, we just have to be aware of older bill and buildings require more money.
There, there is one other aspect for the board's consideration to think about. Um, I went out, you know, on a, a daily basis. For about two weeks and looked, just drove by, checked the parking lot. The one thing to consider if we were to move thirty-fourteen to Public Health is for board meetings to be there. With the limited amount of parking spots that are currently there when it's fully set, or when it's staffed at its current level. Plus moving other employees there, I, I cannot expand that parking lot any. And, and we have no extra land to make that parking lot bigger. The, the biggest drawback you could have, and I don't know how we mitigate that, is parking for board meetings.
We don't have parking here either.
We've got more available space here for parking.
If you want to park in the rock.
Sure, if you want to park in the ground.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That, that's, that's the same, it's the same, same issue here. We haven't had people come to these meetings. So, to me, a parking problem is something we can deal with.
Yeah, and, oh, can I?
Yeah.
When, when we have large trainings, we have, we have parking issues and we, we park down the, down the street and not the, down the um, the access road. And um, and it does get filled up, but, but we can hold a lot of people there. So we, we hold some pretty good-sized trainings.
I've been there for those meetings. I mean, we've had a lot of people in a lot of those meetings, so.
We, we try to, we try to give the staff a heads up on, on where and how to park on those days, and that, that is helpful.
Right.
Has, has everyone here viewed the plans that we had for people moving out there? Have, had, have people come out and looked at the available space that was laid out for them? Do we know that?
Yes, HR went out. If.
You have not? Okay. I, I think I'd like everybody to go out there and look, you know, uh, get a feel, if we were, if we were to move, get a feel on where their new home would be. So we can get, get some feedback on that.
I think, I think for me, the other thing too is how much of the building, are you going to, are you going to still rent part of the building to mental health? Are you not? Are we?
Good question.
Open to moving different departments within Public Health? You know, um, now that, now that there's four meeting rooms, my big concern was the meeting rooms.
I don't know that I want to displace anybody at this time. But.
Yeah, the questions that come up to me is um, is A, you know, we think of our meeting space, and I don't know if, what the technology is like out there. I have, I have viewed um the building. And where we were at currently is, you know, where our position would be as the supervisors and possibly HR was where the lease space is. And I have expressed that I don't want to kick somebody out of their lease, you know. If we can have that revenue come in, I think that is, is, is important. The tornado shelter is here, the one that's accessible versus going down. I mean, we just recently had an issue, so that to me is also um something that we need to think of. I'd also say that this building is too good to just not use it. I do think it's something that, and I know that EMA would like to stay here. It's been made very apparent with their warehouse being here, so. I will state what I had said earlier, and I, and being very frank, I told Lisa, um, don't necessarily have a problem if HR wants to move. You know, I currently like my office and uh, you know, I, I would like to stay here. And if personally, if I was gonna move, I would be looking at trying to go back to the courthouse. If that was me, you know, but I don't have any desire to move. I also think we have to think about IT. I think this um building is imperative. I also think we have to think about IT. I think this um, building is imperative for IT issues.
Why is it imperative for IT issues?
I think that some of that.
No, why is it imperative for IT issues?
I, I wouldn't necessarily it's imperative for this specific building. But it is where our DR site is currently. That site could move if we had to, but that's, it is currently right here.
Okay, so.
So it's, it's, today it's imperative. But if we moved it somewhere else, then, then that building would be imperative.
Where would we move to? Anybody got an idea?
I think that's something that maybe we would, I don't know that.
I have ideas. I'm not sure I'm willing to disclose them in a, in a public meeting, but I'd be happy to chat with you.
Think the, the, the bottom line for me is just to make sure we utilize our space effectively. And that if we're going to spend money on properties. We spend it. Uh, with that in mind. And maintaining properties that no longer have the same use. Or that have outlived their usefulness. Just like we've done with all of our other locations. We need to think about that. Is that something we want to continue to spend taxpayer money on? So. From my perspective, as we see this site at public health. Continue to decline in terms of its total population, that is a major expense. For the county, not just over the last year, but over the last decade. And to leave it half with, with fourteen empty spaces potentially is not a good utilization of that space. And you're not going to fill it full of renters. That's that, and you're not going to gain that much rent anyway. You're going to save more money putting people there that the taxpayers pay. Than you are in rental income. Um, unless we're gonna like rent it out to Tesla. Carla can work on that. Maybe even get Elon to put his office here. So we just need to think through those issues. And from a cost structure standpoint for this building, whether it's parking or septic or those things. We need to really think about why we're maintaining something. That is kind of a death by a thousand cuts. Cause that's what this building is.
How do we acquire this? Property, Jake? I don't.
Pre-Jake. It was pre-Jake.
Jake would have been here, Steve.
I believe that it was a lumberyard uh, prior and um. I believe back, back then. This county was required to um, provide actual office space and well, we still are. It's, it, it looks different now uh, for Department of Human Services. So it. It was all, this whole building was Department of Human Services when I started it at the county.
I know I, I have mixed emotions. I spent a lot of hours here. You know, fixing this place up. But I also understand that. There's some maintenance issues that need to be addressed. And I, I, I'm not lost on what you're saying, Mark. You know, utilizing our, our best spaces. What, what, what could we utilize this for if we were to move out? What would we, what would we use it for? I'm, I'm trying to think in my head. Is it, is it more valuable gone or is it more valuable utilizing as a storage unit? I, I don't know.
I think that's something to think about, Steve. I think that my only, my only point in raising it is. I know that, that we have some departments that have looked. Lisa and Renee have gone over to the public health building. They liked it. Thought it'd be a good fit for them. Uh, they like the added security. Of the building, which I think is a relevant topic as well. So I, I think that's something to consider. But what we would use this for in the future, if it has a util, if it has a use. I think that's something. Yeah, and does it have one? I don't, I don't have an answer for that.
I don't either.
Right now.
I think we need to, we need to.
To me, it's an expense. I mean, I look at buildings right now as an expense and as you try to decrease your expense footprint. We've done pretty well as a county over the last ten years in doing that. And that's provided some significant dollars and savings. Uh, to our general fund.
But when you talk about expense, I mean, if. If we don't all go, we still have the same expense.
And that's, that's the issue. If you keep somebody here, if you make the exceptions and all that kind of stuff, then you kind of defeat the purpose of it. Cause now you got another half populated building that you have to keep the heat on pour and the water on and the septic running and all that.
I would like everybody to, if we were all the mood, whoever's going to affect, at least go out there and look. Look at the area that has been that, not designated, but has been. Looked at for your department and, and get a feel for it. Before just say no, but. I, I mean, I'd like to.
I think it's a good idea. Absolutely. Absolutely good idea. My, again, my purpose is to keep it on our radar screen. I have the discussion. Uh, we just heard from Kelly on property taxes and the difficulties. That the state will put in our way. We heard from Tyler on roads. And some of the things they've done that will now actually cost more money for us. So managing your expenses on the, on the expense side, especially property, is pretty critical. Cause it's a large line item.
Can I just ask a question? For us to go look at the building is fine, but. When I looked at it. I was looking at a space that. May not be designated as where we would go now. So. I mean, we can go look at it, but ultimately I think it's. Someone has to give us direction how they want the building structured, basically. Somewhat, you know what I'm saying? Or do I just go pick out an office?
I'd say go look at the open spaces right now with Kim and see if it's configured to meet what you need.
Okay.
And then you go, and then we go from there.
Uh, that's kind of my point.
Yeah. And then Kim, if we've got five temporary positions. We kind of need to know the timeline on when. Those will be gone or what the purpose of that is. As for mental health, Rachel and I have talked, and now with the restructuring of mental health, we can either continue to have mental health there or we can. Put them in a different location since they'll all be employees of Heart of Iowa. So there will be changes there as well. Emily.
I think one thing that we also need to keep in mind is on the nine one one side, the sign shop. We would have to be able to keep that truck inside um, and be able to make some sort of a sign shop. Out at the two thousand three North Lincoln.
I, I think the area, there is an inside parking for the truck out there.
Okay, so we would just have to make sure that we would have money to be able to build a, a sign shop of sorts.
And there's room for that also, I believe. When I looked at it.
Isn't there a whole back bay, couple of back bays in that building? That are just sitting empty right now? Yeah. So good point though. Good point, Emily. Thank you. So I, I don't have anything else. Again, just that Steve, I think your points are well taken. To have people look. And just keep it on our mind. And if the answer is sad, we can't make it work, then we can't make it work. But at least we've done our due diligence and not just said, ah, we'll just, we won't do anything. Because it's a little too much effort.
Entertain a motion to close discussion?
So moved.
Second.
Johnor.
I.
Combs.
I.
Remy.
I.
Yes, yes.
And then before we start uh.
The closed session?
No, well, we have annual reviews.
Oh, we got that first?
Yep, yep, so.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to do a five minute recess.
Second.
Coming back, we'll. Do annual reviews.
Got it.
Johnor.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Remy.
Entertain a motion to reconvene back into, oh, sorry, Jake, I'll let you start that.
It's not a work comp issue, Jake.
Entertain a motion to reconvene back into open session.
So moved.
Second.
Johnor.
I.
McCombs.
I.
Remy.
I.
Item number seventeen, Ms. Carla, in our annual review. Thank you, Carla. I know that. We had a little bit of break there, but I appreciate your patience on that.
Yeah, and I apologize. I think all my commissioners were on, but due to the length of the meeting, um, they've had to leave, so.
Nope.
I send their regrets.
No, I, yeah, I knew that it was probably going to be a little bit longer one. Um, Carla, I know that you had put in our packets this morning, um. An annual report, also support letters in which um, stating what the commission and yourself do. So I appreciate that. Uh, perspective. And regarding um. Your uh, performance evaluation. Like always, I ask a few questions and if you're open to that, I would be grateful.
Sure.
One of the questions that come to mind is, and it's similar to what I asked the previous, um, when we did previous evaluations, but. What is something that maybe that you could do to make economic development better? Or you have a vision in which you think that economic development could be better? So.
Well, we took from the IEDC recommendations that you have there in your packet as well, two of them that we felt were really important for us moving forward. One is that um. We are working on a comprehensive economic development and marketing plan and marrying the two and having a plan to work from. Uh, not only to help guide us, but also to help take advantage of those opportunities that are out there. Um, the other aspect that I think is really important that we're working on right now and should be done in about another month. Is that we're working on some tools for exit planning. We have found with many of our businesses, it, as you know, it is hard to get businesses started. It is hard to keep businesses growing, but it's also difficult in communities when business owners age out. They either sell their business, close their business. And those transitions are not what we want. And we have many of our businesses of our prime employers, which are. Major employers, only fourteen percent of them had any type of exit plan. Um, so we think that's an important service that we can help them provide, help them get better connected to resources. So that we have smooth transitions of our successful businesses. When any business would close, also helping our businesses as we learn through COVID, when all of a sudden you wake up the next morning and the business owner is dead. For whatever reason. Um, so help preparing our businesses for those transitions, we think is important from. A long-term strategic standpoint. The other thing that we took out of that recommendation is a housing plan and to update our housing plan. Uh, we know that our housing plan is old. We know Knoxville did one about a year ago. Um, by the time this one comes out, that one will be seen by developers as old. So keeping on that path of looking for where the opportunities are for for sale, senior and rental housing. Making sure that we're taking advantage of those, um, so they can help. Not only, uh, we've been very successful in growing jobs part of the time, but we haven't been as successful getting those people to live here. So making sure that as we're working to grow jobs, we're also working to have the availability so that residents can live here.
Okay, alright. And the housing plan, uh, that you're talking about that, the study I should say. Are you implementing that? Is that gonna be next uh, budget?
It is in the budget that I submitted. Uh, we also had plans in that budget and that's what uh, will come out later, probably this week. Um, most of the money, uh, funding for that plan, we are trying to do like we did last time with raising the money. So I have submitted um, an application to the Marion County Community Foundation for part of that funding. And we will be going out, asking our communities, our organizations and our businesses to help us fund that effort like we did last time. Unfortunately, um, the price of the study has increased since twenty fifteen. So what we did for about twenty five thousand dollars back then is now thirty three. So um, trying to raise that funding to see that we can make that happen. We would, if we can give um, the consultant. Um, because they are somewhat backlogged with COVID, the notification July one that we can move forward, if we can get our, our commitments by then. Then that will keep us for a release of the plan in the spring of twenty four, which is advantageous for developers.
Yeah, I know that uh, the city of Pella used that study a lot and uh, it would be interesting to see what our need would be. And regarding, you know, now that we have, you know, increased, um, especially workforce housing, so.
Yeah, and our plan is to do it in much the same way we did last time with submarkets. So that allows each of our communities or our regions to have their own individual data, as well as us to have the countywide data.
Uh, another question for you is, um, if you could erase something from your to-do list, what would it be?
What I really miss not having an assistant is having to do invoices, following up with people to pay invoices. Getting people to approve ads, um, all those little tedious things, um, you know, um, that. You know, entering all the events for the year and the tourism site, um. If I could get rid of that, that would be those tedious things that just take a lot of time.
Okay, alright. And a strength, what's one of your strengths, you think, Carla?
I would say the one thing over the years I've been proud of our team. Is that we don't do the same things today we did twenty years ago. And I think our adaptability to adjust to what's happening and what's going on in our community and our surroundings. And taking advantage of those as a team. And I, I say that because our commissioners are part of the decision-making function of what we do. Um, I think that our adaptability to change and do things that we've never done before. We do a pitch event. Two years ago, we were not doing that kind of thing. So we, we've been very adaptable, but also understanding what things are successful, like leadership Red Rock. And holding on to those things that are helping us build that core of next generation leaders.
I know that uh, what, you know, some of the things that you've done, and I know that we as a board have asked you. Um, you have probably what you consider a plan. And sometimes we railroad that plan and say, hey, Carla, we need your help with this. Um, I appreciate your graciousness and uh, I. The things that when we've been able to accomplish, I've been grateful, especially like the RIF and doing that process and I receiving that. You know, it's very beneficial when it comes to economic development. So I'll let the board speak if they have any questions or.
Steve, anything?
You know, I know you're, you're planning on retiring here for long, right, Carla?
Uh, my goal is um, the first quarter of twenty twenty five.
Okay, I know we talked about bringing somebody on to, for training and where are we at with that?
Uh, I have put that in the budget that was submitted, um, to bring that person on basically about this timeframe next year. So that person would have one year training with me, um, in order to be able to then have this transition. That's also why the. The strategic plan is important because we hope to start on that this July, so that by the time we hire a new person. We will have a good set out strategic plan for them to follow. So. I'll be able to then work with them that first year of getting that plan started and. Making it a smooth transition as we can. Um, I hope you appreciate that. It's not exactly what I wanted to do to tell people that I was retiring this early. But I'm doing that because I think it's important for this type of a department to have that kind of transition.
Yeah, and I, I believe that we were supportive of that, you know, when we, when we talked about it earlier.
In the budget, yep.
Yep, it is.
Yeah.
No.
That's it. Alright. Carla, what was the, the consultant group that we had in here where we met over? I think it was at REC and.
IEDC, that's the report that, that was in that package.
Yeah, so.
The International Economic Development Council.
One of, one of the best activities. I've been a part of in my time on the board. So I really want to compliment you on that. I thought. The engagement at the county level and the civic and the, the, the non-governmental level was, was pretty substantial. What are we gonna do to follow up with that? Cause that was an excellent discussion.
Right, and if you look in your, the packet that I gave you.
I don't, I don't, yeah, mine's, mine's in my office.
You know, they had uh, basically one, two, three, four, five, six, seven recommendations that came out of that. And um, most of those we incorporated into the budget request, like I said. So you know, part of what we're looking at, some of it will come about in the strategic plan. So um, as they talk about, you know, one of their recommendations was to invest further in economic development capacity. And that's what we hope that and, you know, evaluating um, as far as the best financial governance structure for us. Whether that is to continue as a county department, whether that is some kind of public, private organization. What is that? That, those recommendations are kind of wrapped into that strategic plan. Uh, the other one, and, and then of course, the recommendation to do the strategic plan. Uh, the other one was the housing study. Um, then they had um, a cohesive workforce development strategy. That one I haven't quite unpacked yet. And then the place making and tourism, and we're doing some things in that to kind of. Bring us better together there. So we are doing most of it. The only one that I would say, um, that we, that we haven't addressed yet. Is the workforce development strategy and the countywide broadband infrastructure. And again, some of those are things that I think might work into that strategic plan to say, what is our role and, and taking the time to define for both of those. What is MCDC's role in workforce, in broadband? Um, so that's kind of why. Um, so that's kind of why I've left those to be part of that strategic plan.
So, so all of the, I mean, those are, those are good items. The one thing that's kind of missing in there, maybe it's between the lines, is what's the partnership with our private enterprise that Marion County Economic Development has direct interaction with? And lobbying. Governmental efforts. All of those workforce development, um, you know, housing, all those things, we, we, I think in general, if you were to ask most of our large employer, most of our employers, ask large or small. I'm, I'm a small employer. They would say housing is an issue. They would talk about daycare. They would talk about the need for uh, people. Right, human resources. But the one area that I've been, you know, I've been focused on this because I talk about it a lot, especially every time Kelly is here, is when, when will we get the support of our business community? To help us with things like property tax reform and income tax reform and those things that have, there's always been a debate. Debate is how much impact does that have on our employment? And so far, I think I'm winning that debate. And the reason I'm winning that debate is for ten years, we haven't grown our population. We've stayed flat. So we've done the housing. We're looking at daycare solutions. We do workforce development and different types of initiatives. We have Leadership Red Rock, which is an excellent program. Our population is still flat. So what are we going to do on that side of the house to in- integrate our business folks? To get on the same page as us? Because we're their representatives, or get us on the same page with them? As to what, how we direct the state of Iowa to do certain policies and make certain policies. And to me, that's one of the cornerstones of economic development that we've let kind of kind of float out there, but there's no been, there's been no cohesive effort to join forces. We talk about funding roads and those types of things. But our major initiative over ten years has been housing. We've devoted more time, effort and energy to those projects because that was in the housing study. And we needed that, and our business community affirmed that. How are we gonna address that, Carla? How are we gonna bring that together? Because we're doing all the other things, and we may need to refine it, and we may need to look at different components of that that maybe we're not doing as well as we should. But that piece, we're not doing at all. Because we might have a discussion internally, maybe over at uh, like we did at Lally. Where we get everybody together and talk about our issues. But there's no cohesive Marion County proposal for what we want the legislature to do. And as you just heard, no one knows the outcome of the bills they just passed. And, and that's, and that to me is a problem. And, and there you go. You just hit the nail on the head. So how do we, wha- what, what would you say? You're, you're planning your exit.
One of the.
But how can we bring this together?
One of the things we did about a year or two ago was knowing that we joined A B I to understand, because A B I is the Association of All the Major Employers.
Yep.
To understand what their conversation is, what their priorities are from a legislative issue standpoint. And learning at, at where we see the same and where we see different. And I can tell you that their, their priorities are slightly different than, than what I believe Marion County's priorities are. So therefore, there's a little bit of education that has to go on um, to get that, to, and the hard part is business priorities are always, I think, gonna be a little bit different than a government priority. Um, they just are, they have some, you know, it's like what's, what's cranky or scratching you is what's gonna get the attention. And, and I think for businesses, there's issues, maybe perhaps a little more high on their list than the tax issue, although the tax issue is one of their five components of their, their platform that they have positions on.
Is there agreement that, that good tax policy helps draw people to your community?
I believe so, yeah.
Your nation.
I, I think overall, on the, the big philosophical, like um, statements, they would agree. It gets in the weeds is where people get different opinions of what should happen.
Yeah, how about energy policy?
They, they do have an energy policy. I would say that's not as robust as their tax portion of it.
Okay. I guess, I guess I would say as you, as you start thinking about this transition period, I just would encourage you. Cause you and I have talked about this for ten years. This is the piece I still see as the whole. I think Marion County, this board and the boards I've been a part of have done a pretty good job trying to come alongside and see what the business community and what our other municipalities have said, these are our needs. Housing being foremost among that. But there are other things that if they, if we don't marry up, we're going to get the kind of legislative action we just heard. And to your point, Carla, it's what's coming. The state of Iowa is consolidating everything around Des Moines and around the state apparatus. That's never a good thing for local government, local enterprise.
One of the, as in my personal opinion, one of the scariest proposals that was out there this year dealt with how they were trying to fund I will.
Mm-hmm.
And bringing the lost tax into the state.
Yes.
And then reapportioning it out. Uh, where Marion County is challenged is that population-wise, we rank twenty-first, twenty-second out of counties. But from a loss sales tax collection, we rank about eleven.
About eleven, yeah.
So we would be losing money more than likely. Um, and everybody points to, well, we want Pope County's money, but for us, it may not be the best situation to have that collected in and reapportioned out.
No, cause we'll be getting ours dispersed to other counties.
Yes.
Under that plan, as proposed, you just, you just hit it. And I, I think that's why we've got to have this effort, or we've got to build on that.
And that's when we did talk about that at P D I. I know, I brought the issue up um, to them to say, hey, you know, if the state wants to pull it in, let's not have these formulas that get developed that um, are not just, okay, if you wanna collect it in, give us what we collect, what we've earned.
Right.
If you wanna collect it and, and have it flow that way, we don't care about the flow as long as we get the money that we have collected back out.
Yeah. Okay, very good. No, I appreciate it, Carla. And overall.
And like I said, one of the advantages we have right now, in addition to Kelly, I have access to lobbyists through P D I, through the Greater Des Moines Partnership, and through A B I and through I T. So I have access to five lobbyists, and I generally hear what all five lobbyist groups have to say. Um, so we are connected and knowledgeable about what's going on. And what you're talking about is taking that knowledge to the next level. And part of the challenge that we face is what they talk about with capacity. I am one person.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you know, trying to do all the things over here with housing and all these other things and then doing this, there's only so much capacity one person can do, and that's what we've been challenged with.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Carla, yeah. Carla, um, you had spoke and regarding what you're asking for your salary, and um, it was more than the five percent.
That is correct.
It was a stair step process in which um, you were, you were, if I remember right, from the, from budget, you were talking about um, going to, you were asking for sixty-nine thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Your commission wanted you to ask for seventy-five, but you said you felt like a stair step. And the process that when we go to hire um, the next person, that it's, it's tends to be what you're currently getting paid. We, we're not gonna.
What we.
Your recommendation was that we weren't gonna be able to get an eligible candidate that was probably with the qualifications, so.
Right, and, and that's what we've spent a lot of time with you and I and I E D C uh, looking at last fall was where my current salary is because it has never market adjusted in twenty-seven years. Um, and you know, we've had years where we got zero percent or one percent, and what was happening in the real market in other places, again, to have many of these economic development organizations, I think there's only about fifteen, twenty that are uh, Departments of County Government, the rest of them are all public-private organizations. Um, to be able to compete to perhaps lure a second person or a third person away from one of those into this director's position, we have to get the salary to a level. I also believe, um, as a professional, I've developed a lot of certifications, a lot of expertises, and um, I believe I'm not really being paid at the level that my skills and my capacity to handle all these diverse programs is at. Um, so that's why we put in the five percent for cost of living increase as well as kind of a market rate adjustment. Not only to prepare us for the future, but because of the professional that they have in the position today. And if they were on, they would tell you that, but unfortunately, they've had to leave to other meetings.
Um, and so.
And I would say, you know, especially, we, we gathered a handful of support letters. We could have gotten more. Um, you know, we thank the companies that provided those. Um, they know the value of what we're providing back to them. Um, it's one of the best things we do is to help our companies, and I think that we have to continue that service at a professional level.
So I wanna make sure that I understand when you're asking, are you asking for that set amount? Uh, when you asked in your proposal, it was the sixty-nine thousand. Um, but that's not a five percent increase on top of that. We were just asking for the sixty-nine.
That included the five percent.
All right, okay, that included the five. Thank you for, uh, you know. And then also, um, I, I guess I understand where you're going with that, and I get uh, the perspective because you're trying to, it's a transition. And I do appreciate the things that you stepped up. We've asked you to step up, and you have. I know the last three or four years that I've been here, we've, you know, said, hey, we want to see these things, and you have done them. Um, and I know that the part-time position has been removed, and I guess it currently, I would prefer that the part-time position not be there. Um, but I, I'm not, I guess I'm not against the sixty-nine thousand, is what I'm saying.
What is she, what is she currently at?
Sixty-one, sixty-one, six forty-six.
And part of why we did that is in the budget, you'll see in the report for next year, the per month. Um, the sixty-nine would get me at a per month salary of five thousand, seven hundred and fifty. For the assistant that we hope to hire next spring, uh, that per month would be five thousand, six hundred and twenty-five. So almost the exact same of what I'm making to hire a person without experience. But that's where we have to be in order to even have a chance at attracting anybody.
And I appreciate that you're trying to say to us, I mean, it, it does come down to dollars and cents, and that it is difficult because we only have, you know, we just talked about property tax reform. We're limited in our growth, but if we want this position, this is something we definitely as a board are gonna have to face, so.
So Carla, I wanna make sure you want a five percent, which would be around sixty-four and change. And then an additional market rate adjustment of just another almost uh, four thousand dollars on top of that.
Yeah.
That's what you're asking for?
Yes.
Carla, when I look at the revenue and expenses, and when I see fees and grants, is that our local, our local companies, are they, are they help funding some of this?
They do. Uh, like I said last time, when we did the housing study last time, Marion County put zero funds into it, except my time. And we raised all the money from our businesses, from our organizations, from our cities to do that program. Many of our programs have fees, like Leadership Red Rock. If companies wanna have people in that program, they pay a fee. Um, our, our pitch event, we have, we give prize money out to the companies that win the pitch event. So we have entities that pay money into that for fees and sponsorships. Our travel guide, um, we get almost, I think about seventy-five percent of the revenue for the travel guide is from advertisers. So those are companies who pay for an ad in the travel guide. So we co- collect fees as well as grant applications. This year, we received a nine thousand dollar tourism grant application to do our experience passports. Um, so we do occasionally have opportunities for grants as well.
Okay.
So, so and I, I appreciate what you're trying to do, Carla, and I, and the, trying to keep salaries competitive. I guess, as I'm willing to go five and two and not five and four, so. That's what, that's what I would go with.
So you're at sixty-seven?
It'd be about sixty-six, seven, I think is what the number, if my math is right. What's that? Do the five percent and then a two, two thousand dollar.
And two thousand.
Lisa, can you check my math?
I did.
What does that come out to?
So five percent plus two thousand would equal sixty-six thousand, seven twenty-eight. Is that what you got?
Yes.
Well, I was okay with the sixty-nine.
Sounds like we need a motion.
I make a motion that uh, we uh, approved the sixty-nine thousand mask.
A second. Raimi?
No.
John?
Hi.
Combs?
Hi.
Thank you, thank you, Carla.
Thank you.
Entertain, uh, do we need to do anything on closed discussion? How you wanna do that, Jake?
Um, generally, you guys close the discussion after these.
All right. Yeah, we will. No, it's closed discussion on just this item, so yeah. Entertain a motion to close discussion on.
So move.
Second.
Raimi?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Item number eighteen is um, in review for Andrew I T. Andrew. Thank you. I know it's been a rather long meeting. Appreciate your, you know. So Andrew, um, and regarding I T, I know there is, I'm just kicking this off with, I know there's lots of updates, things that happened, um, staying on top of that. When I think of those things, is there one item which, um, this is one of the questions I'm gonna ask you is, is there a way we could streamline any of it? Is it, um, or do you feel that it's coming, becoming more cumbersome?
I'm not sure that uh, it's getting more cumbersome. It's definitely expanding. We continue to use more and more technology every day. And so, um, we do have uh, a significant amount of automation built into our processes as much as we can. Um, there are some rooms for improvement. Everybody uses the AI buzzword these days and, and uh, I definitely have found um, some uses for that for us, and we are using some of that sometimes for things like writing code, writing scripts, and things like that to help us automate things. But realistically, the increase has typically been um, just the expanse or, or uh, increase in the use of technology. So everybody is continuing to use more and more technology in their departments, which puts more and more strain on I T.
Okay, all right. Again, what I had asked the others, is there something that, um, in regarding your position that you would, you know, like to knock off your to-do list?
Um, you know, if I take things off of my to-do list, somebody else is gonna have to do them. Um, and because things start to fail, so. I don't know that necessarily there's items that I can think of to take off the to-do list. There might be things that uh, could be done better or more efficiently. Um, I can tell you about one thing that's been pretty annoying over the last three years, which has been, um, I guess I would call it uh, the flexibility of projects or, or having to change projects mid-stream. So, you know, obviously, we come, I come to you guys in November, December timeframe for budgets. Well, at that point, I've already spent two, three months planning and designing and engineering projects that I'm gonna do the following budget year. And the last three years, I think about half of those projects have changed after the budget has been approved because of either supply chain issues or uh, cost overruns, costs increasing on hardware and software. Um, and so.
Is there something you can give us an example of, is, is it a project or something that wouldn't go without, I mean,
It's not anything that we can go without, but I've, I've changed um, when they were done. So um, we were gonna do firewalls three years ago. Um, that was budgeted, and I budgeted nine thousand dollars for that project because it cost me nine thousand dollars. Because it cost me nine thousand dollars, uh, or eight thousand dollars, I think. Um, seven years ago. The bids came back at fifty four thousand dollars. That's the co- that's the kind of increases we're talking about in some of the, some of this enterprise level IT stuff. It's not that way for everything. Computers and stuff have started to come down, but um. Different types of projects and things like that have definitely um, increased, and so oftentimes I have to rework them or. Maybe push them off to the next year and do a different thing this year, and so uh, then I'm redesigning and planning different things at different times, and so. There's really nothing we can do about that, as far as I know, um. The, the one thing that some counties have done is they have made a, a capital improvement fund for IT. Where um, if you don't spend all of your, your budget for that year, some of those funds would go into that capital improvement fund. And then the following year, you may be able to tap into those for projects. We haven't done that here, um. Maybe that's an opportunity for improving that. I don't know, uh, I haven't really looked too deeply into that, but um, that may be an, an opportunity where we could. We could do some things that, you know, if I had to spread a cost out over a couple of budget years or something like that.
Well, I know on behalf of myself, and I'm sure the constituents of Marion County would be thankful that you're, you know, you're looking at these and going, okay, I'm trying to budget. And um, you know, honestly, these price increase due to COVID, they're very difficult to absorb. I mean, again, it goes back to we only have, we're limited in amount of funds, and I know that seems very redundant, but. Um, again, that just shows us trying to be fiscally responsible and trying to make sure we have top notch, but at the same point. Uh, there's some costs that, you know, we have to work within what we, what our means are, so, yeah. A strength. I know complimenting yourself is, you know.
I, you know, I always, I always really enjoy, and I feel like I do a good job at project management or vendor management. Um, you know, large projects, you know, a lot of, a lot of the things that I do. Um, are working on large projects, things that take weeks or months to um. Design, engineer, plan for, procure, purchase, and then implement, so. I, I, it's something that I enjoy and I feel like I do pretty well.
And do you have an area in which you would like to grow in?
Um, growth, so, you know, uh, the, the technologies that are constantly changing are areas that I feel like. I need to continue to grow in. So, um, things like cloud computing. Um, security. Those areas are ever-changing, so um, it's things that I, I need continuous training on as, as any IT person would. Um, so yeah, those are areas where I feel like. Those are areas I feel like I need um, growth.
So you'd say continuing education, that type of thing?
Yeah, education conferences, things like that, um. The world of technology is ever-changing, and so if you're not constantly learning, you're falling behind.
Board, have any questions, comments for Andrew?
Hey Andrew, when you talk about a capital improvement fund. On the leftover budget, what do you, what, what are you actually? Thinking there, are you thinking the total leftover budget or a percentage thereof or a set amount, dollar amount, or?
Yes, that's a good question. So I have specific line items that are meant for capital items. So I have a hardware and software specific lines in my budget. And if I don't spend all that money, oftentimes it's because I couldn't um. Get the project completed, or maybe I had to pivot to a different project because I couldn't procure uh, the hardware and like. Another example, uh, Keisha, you asked earlier, an example. I uh, recently did a whole bunch of switches, the lead time on that was three hundred and eighty days. So you can just imagine when I, when I buy it. Over a year before I get it, so um, now those have thankfully gone down over the last six, eight months. Uh, so I was able to do that project this year because uh, that procurement time went way down. But for the previous two years, that was that, that's how long it was. So in those cases where I don't spend all of that money in those, those line items. My thought was put those, put that money into a capital improvement fund so that I could potentially use it the following budget year.
So you just roll over those. Line items into a capital improvement, okay. Alright, I was just trying.
And I don't even know, I mean, I haven't even talked to Jake about that. I don't even know if we can do something like that, but.
Yeah, and. In his review, in a nutshell, if you guys would wanna look at something like that, the way I would see it is. If there's line items and let's say he has twenty thousand dollars left in that line item. Um, it's all general fund money, or you would set up a, that would be general fund money. You could set up a sub-fund of the general fund, that would be a capital projects, just like you guys have capital projects, maybe, and you would either. Can't transfer between funds, so probably write a warrant out of that at the end and deposit it. Into the sub-fund that would be designated for capital projects for IT. The challenge with that is you have to budget that as well. So you always have, would have to budget for maximum, just is what you guys are doing for your, so that's how. Thanks for the heads up, Andrew.
Sorry about that Jake, kinda load that on you.
Andrew, are we, are we still under COVID era pricing? For IT?
Um. There's still probably. Pre-COVID, I probably have. Maybe twenty percent increases on computers, which has come down. Um, the biggest price increase still is the enterprise portion of our infrastructure. Which would be servers, firewalls, switching, equipment, that type of stuff. Is still fifty to a hundred percent higher than what it was previously.
Okay, and those are the most expensive items.
Yes, and I, I suspect that that is just the new reality of, of cost.
Do you think it will stay that way?
I don't believe that will go down. It, it may come down a little bit, but. I don't see it, I don't foresee it coming down like the computers have done, have done. They've kinda come down. Within a reasonable amount over, over three years, they're, you know, fifteen to twenty percent higher. Uh, than what they were three years ago, whereas that enterprise equipment, that's the stuff that I'm budgeting for. Uh, from my capital funds are those, those very expensive items that.
And that's not, and that could be not just a function of. Pricing because of supply uh, deficiencies, it's changes in supply chain.
Yeah, although a lot of this, most of this stuff comes from overseas.
Sure.
It's all built overseas and.
I think the thing you're gonna see though is that because of what we've done with China is, it's, we're, we're not gonna get it from them anymore. It's gonna come from other locations, which is gonna extend your duration and increase your costs even more on the enterprise side, but. So, but your, but your other things, computers, terminals, software, that's all been decreasing because electronics in general have been. Decreasing in price.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's within a reasonable, um, you know, ten to fifteen, twenty percent higher than it was three years ago, which is. It's pretty standard, uh, software, anywhere from five to ten percent per year increases. That's normal, um, and I, I would say it's back down to that. We do have one question mark, um. One of our major software vendors uh, was recently purchased out, uh, bought out by a, a national company, and. Um, this is just personal sus- suspicions, but I wouldn't be surprised if that. Software goes up by a lot, um, just because it's a national company now and it was a local company, and so. National companies buy out smaller companies, they tend to raise their price, but we'll, it, we'll see.
Okay.
It did go up about fifteen percent this, this year.
Okay, what are the biggest risks you see? Coming in the next year, two years for IT?
The thing that keeps me up at night is ransomware and security.
Okay.
And that is always a hot button issue, but um. Well, security is one of these things that. We have to be one hundred percent successful at, and the bad guy only needs to be. They, they only need to get through one time.
And what's our solution to stay ahead of the bad guy?
We are constantly evolving what software we use, we're constantly uh. Training, we're constantly updating, patching, we're doing all the things that, that we need to be doing to make sure that we're. Staying ahead, but again, it's, it's always a cat and mouse game, it's a multi-billion dollar industry. Um. You know, we, we have things the bad guys want.
Have we had any issues with bad guys in this area?
We have not had any major ransomware events. We haven't had any, we haven't had any data loss, we haven't had any HIPAA events, we have not had any um, financial. Losses or anything like that.
Good.
But we do block a lot of bad stuff.
Okay, so that's the number one issue. For, for you and your folks.
That's the, that is the number one thing that if we got. It's the number one thing that if, if something happened, it would be. It would affect everybody in this.
And what would we do if something happened?
Well, we really hope our backups work well, and we'd hope our disaster recovery works well, and.
We hope?
Mm-hmm.
Have we tested it?
We do.
Do we know it works?
It does.
Okay, so it's more than a hope, right?
Yep, but it's, you know, have I, have I uh, replaced every single person's computer in the entire organization? With a new operating system because they got ransomware? No, I don't have the time and effort or resources to do that.
But no company does that either, but they test it to.
They test, they test their failures, yes, and backups, yes, and we do test those.
Okay, alright, well, if uh, if I had all your uh, colleagues in here from different departments, how would they rate your performance?
I hope they would rate it well, um, you know, I feel like. We, I feel like I try very hard to um. You know, listen to the, the uh, technology needs of the department and try to come up with solutions. Um, sometimes those solutions. Um, sometimes it's, it's tough to make sure that. Um, we explain the security aspects of, of the requirements. Uh, and compliance aspects, we, we do have two major compliance. Aspects that we have to maintain always, which is HIPAA for the Public Health Department and CDIS for the law enforcement offices, and both of those have very complex. Requirements to them. Um, and so sometimes uh, departments will ask for things. And they get frustrated when I say, well, we can, we might have to do a variation of that based on security requirements. Or based on compliance requirements. So, um, one example would be when we implemented the multi-factor authentication. Which was a requirement from us by insurance, uh, and it's also becoming one for, because of CDIS. So, um, you know, the deputies weren't real crazy about that, you know, they didn't wanna have to hit another button when they're logging in. We kinda had to work through that with the chair. Um, I think they're used to it now, but you know, that was a bit of a hiccup, so.
If I can say, I don't like it either, but I get why it's being done. And I, and I understand, I mean. Cause.
And as many times as you have to click on that thing every day, I guess how many times I have to click on it every day, it's annoying, I know, I get it.
There wasn't bad people trying to get into our subs, we wouldn't have this problem, right?
Well, thank you, Missy. So again, from a customer service standpoint, you would feel confident. That you get a bunch of people like Missy saying, they attend to my needs, they deal with my issues, they're easy to work with. I, uh, help me problem solve through all the things I have to. Cause that's your ultimate customer. Yes, it's the taxpayer, but you're dealing with all the people that touch the taxpayer. Or touch some operation of Marion County, and you, you'd think with high confidence, that's what they would say about you and the team.
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay, very good. That's all I got, thank you.
Andrew, um, in regarding uh, salary, you put five percent, is that correct?
Yes.
Other than that, does anybody else have any comments?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Entertain a motion to close discussion?
So moved.
Second.
John?
Hi.
Combs?
Hi.
Raim?
Hi.
Entertain a motion to. Close open session.
So moved.
Second.
McCombs? Hi.
Raimi?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Entertain a motion to reconvene from into open session?
So moved.
Second.
Um, action, um, from. John? Oh, yeah.
Hi.
McCombs? Hi.
Raim?
Hi.
Got ahead of myself there Jake, sorry about that. Um, action from the closed session. Do I need to do an entertaining of a motion of this?
Yes.
Okay, entertain a motion uh, to pursue acquisition of an appraisal on the laundry building that's owned by the county.
I'll make a motion to do just that.
Second.
Raimi?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Item number twenty is supervisor updates.
Uh, I gotta stop by the landfill when I leave here and have some discussions with the director.
Okay, yeah, uh, mental health reorg, still working out some of the details, had a great meeting with Rachel yesterday. Um, with uh, some discussion points for our next board meeting, so process continuing.
Uh, I have an impact um, meeting tomorrow. Entertain a motion? Adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
McCombs? Hi.
Raimi?
Hi.
John?
Hi.